...meeting of November 25th, 2019. I move the approval of Action Item 1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions, questions, concern, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I would now like to address Action Item B1 on the policy calendar. Policy Item B1 is a resolution requesting the City University Construction Fund to provide funding to upgrade the fire alarm system at the vertical campus building at Baruch College, up to an amount not to exceed $5 million. I now call on Senior Vice Chancellor Alan Wai-Lu to provide further background on this item.
The existing fire alarm system at Baruch's college, Baruch's college's vertical campus building is approximately 20 years old, requires upgrading to meet the new New York City Fire Department code requirements. Scope of work will include design currently being performed by Siemens. Design must be approved by the New York City Fire Department. Siemens technology is to install new fire alarm system, including central monitoring station. Design completion is expected in May of 2020. Construction start is expected in July 2020, conclude in October 2021. Project is funded with $5 million from state capital funds.
I move the approval of Policy Item B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Policy Item B2 is a resolution requesting the City University Construction Fund to provide funding to upgrade the chillers at Baruch College's chiller plan up to an amount not to exceed $5 million. I now call on Senior Vice Chancellor Alan Wai-Lu to provide further background on this item.
Baruch College's central chiller plant located in its information technology building serves the information technology and vertical campus buildings. It consists of three 750-ton centrifugal electric chillers. Chiller 1 and 2 are 27 years old. Chiller 3 is 20 years old. Life expectancy of a typical chiller is approximately 25 to 30 years. Chillers 1 and 2 are corroded beyond repair and parts not even available for replacement. Chiller 3 was not well maintained and has been taken offline. It would cost approximately $350,000 to repair chiller 3. Replacement is a better option. Scope of work includes a design of code compliant chiller system, installation of three new high efficient centrifugal electric chillers, new controls, piping, valves, free cooling heat exchanges, compliant with global warming potential and ozone depletion requirements. Design is expected to be completed in November 2020. Construction is scheduled to start January 2021, complete in December 2021. Project is funded by $5 million from state capital funds.
Okay. I move the approval of Policy Item B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Item, Policy Item B3 is a resolution requesting the City University Construction Fund to provide funding for the university's share of the cost of sidewalk repairs and local law 11 work at the condominium building where the CUNY Graduate Center is located, up to an amount not to exceed $1,750,000. I now call on Senior Vice Chancellor Alan Wai-Lu to provide further background on this item.
Dastin, on behalf of CUNY, owns a condominium unit located at 365 Fifth Avenue, New York, New York, which is the former Bealton Department Store. This unit is occupied by the CUNY Graduate School and University Center. The unit is 60.8% of the condominium interest and 544,000 gross square feet. Building is managed by George Comfort &amp; Sons on behalf of the four unit owners of the building. The Board of Managers approved George Comfort &amp; Sons engagement of contractors to execute Local Law 11 Cycle 8 in 2018. The first two phases of a sidewalk reconstruction project, Local Law 11 Cycle 8, New York City Department of Buildings code requires facade inspections and necessary improvements for buildings over six stories by a New York State licensed architect every five years. The architect files a Local Law 11 technical report of critical examination to DLB documenting the condition of the facade. Report outlines repairs required to maintain a compliant facade. 365 Fifth Avenue is designated as a New York City landmark, so any work impacting the facade aesthetic requires New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission approval. The required facade remediation work has been approved by LPC. Design was completed in February 2019. Construction started July 2018 and scheduled to conclude in February 2020. CUNY's share of the cost for the Local Law 11 Cycle 8 work is $1 million. It's fully funded from state capital funds. Sidewalk reconstruction project deterioration of the waterproof membrane underneath the sidewalk paving resulted in multiple leaks which are impacting the interior of the building. Sidewalk paving will be replaced and waterproof interior repairs to remediate existing leaks will be done. Phases 1 and 2 includes sidewalks in Madison Avenue from East 34th to East 35th Street and a portion of sidewalks on East 35th Street between Madison and Fifth Avenue. Design completed in February 2016. Construction is scheduled to start April 2020, include in June 2020. CUNY's share of the cost for the sidewalk reconstruction project is $750,000 and is fully funded from state capital funds.
Okay. I move for the approval of Policy Item B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments, concerns? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, all opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Policy Item B4 is a resolution authorizing the university to execute a lease for a Starbucks coffee shop at Hunter College's West Building. I now call on Senior Vice Chancellor Alan Wai-Lu to provide further background on this item.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to invite President Rab to join us at the table.
Sure, please.
After I go over the real estate components of the deal, then I'd like to ask President Rab to touch on the history and background with this project. Okay. University issued a request for proposals for brokerage services to locate a tenant for the lease premises on May 1st, 2017. University selected Colliers International LLC as the exclusive broker. In November 2017, entered into a contract for real estate representative services with Colliers for the lease premises in July 2018. The proposed lease was Starbucks Corporation, 1,959 square feet on the ground floor, 1,000 square feet of contiguous lower level space located in Hunter College's West Building, 904 Lexington Avenue. Initial term of 10 years, eight months, with two five-year renewal options commences on the delivery of the lease premises to Starbucks. Demising wall on the lower level to be constructed by Hunter, temporary ADA compliant entrance ramp to be installed by Hunter, Starbucks buildout to be approved by the university in accordance with prevailing wage and MWBE program requirements. Eight-month rent abatement from lease commencement for buildout, annual rent years 1 through 5, $411,390, years 6 through 10, $452,529. First renewal, $497,781. Second renewal, 95% of fair market value. Hunter will contribute $411,390 as tenant improvement allowance, applied as a rent abatement amortized on a straight-line basis over the first 30 months of the term following rent commencement. Starbucks has a right to cancel before the 60th month following rent commencement. They must provide 270 days prior notice, must pay Hunter's unamortized transaction costs, a surrender fee of $180,000. Hunter to pay Colliers $212,637 commission in two equal installments. First payment due 70 days after lease commencement, second payment due six months after first.
Okay.
President Rab?
Let me, why don't I move this and then when I ask for discussions, I move for the approval of Policy Item B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, the President.
Don't be happy to take any questions. The background is that this space was built originally with the buildings as a retail space. It was historically Hunter's bookstore. With the advent of what has been a really positive impact on the campus, and we thank the board for this, of the online bookstore component, we were able to move to predominantly online bookstore at Hunter, but also maintain a brick-and-mortar bookstore facility by doing a public-private partnership with the Shakespeare Bookstore right across the street. So students are able to purchase books at that bookstore, order books, and also buy Hunter memorabilia and basically have the same function as we had on our campus. That provided a vacancy in this commercial space that was always created for commercial space. So we looked at the needs of the campus at the time and we determined that the revenue, the significant revenue available for a commercial activity in this prime location of 60th Street and Lexington Avenue, coupled with the appropriate tenant, which would also provide a strategic need for us, which is for more communal space, space for meetings, space for students and faculty and staff to get a cup of coffee, to be able to sit on the campus, was an appropriate choice for us. So we will be receiving very significant revenue for the campus for this project, double the amount that we received for the bookstore. And we will also be providing a place for our community to have some social space, place for some food, some coffee, and we determined to move ahead with this lease. And we present it to you today with the hope that you will approve it.
Okay. So this was always retail space? We're not taking any classroom space or any other rest space from the students? Excuse me.
It is always, it has been retail. There was in the gap when, between when the bookstore left. And right now, we've allowed it to be, we've done a rental to environmental clothing space, which we thought would be of interest to the students. We have let the students use it for pop-up art exhibits, but it was built as a retail space, always with the intention that we would return it for retail use. So we asked the central office to support an RFP, which they did. We had a full open bidding for a real estate agent, and then the agent that was selected went out into the market for appropriate uses. And we were clear at that time, we'd like something that was consistent with our master plan of having more spaces on campus where students and faculty and staff could just socialize and sit and have a coffee, et cetera. And that's what we were able to achieve by the Starbucks interest in the space.
Where will the revenues be, where will they go? They go directly to the college?
They go directly to the college to support our operating budget. So it will be supporting adjunct faculty, operating expenses, other renovations for student spaces. So it's really the $400,000 a year after we're, we've finished completely paying back the lease improvements.
Goes to college operations.
Will go right to college operations and right to support students. So at the moment, it's not determined if we have a need for scholarship money that year, we could use it for that. If we have a need to renovate a space, we could use it for that. If we have need to support our adjunct budget for more classes. So we have that flexibility by this money that comes into the college, but it will certainly be needed.
Did I see, I think I looked at some of the design ideas, not even schematics. How many seats would there be roughly available to students? What would the hours of operation be? And would students, I see a piece of art in one of the schematics, would they be able to do any art?
I think we, look, we want the space to be as open and as pleasant for students, and working with a private owner will certainly be wonderful to have student art if that's what Starbucks has planned.
How many seats would that?
May I ask?
52.
About what?
I have it up on the screen.
52? I can't see that.
I suppose that you don't even know.
I'm sorry? Somebody said something.
I'm speaking to the president. I shouldn't even know the number.
Oh, so there would be approximately 52 seats revolving, hours of operation roughly.
And both, but then.
Together, 36 on the lower level, 16 on the ground floor because of the, that's where they make coffee.
So this is a multimillion dollar operation for 52 seats? You don't think that there's any way that this could be used in a different way for the Hunter College community?
They're not charging rent to the lower level.
Was there any input that Hunter students, faculty, or staff gave to this about how this could be used in a non-commercial way? This is a public college, that's part of a public university, and you're wanting to put a Starbucks inside of Hunter College?
What's wrong with coffee?
This space could be so much more amply used to actually improve the educational conditions of CUNY, to support there being open, free, and publicly accessible space for collaborations with the Hunter College faculty and the community?
Thank you, thank you for your comments, but I have to cut you off.
How many Starbucks do we have in the five-block radius of Hunter College? Do we need another Starbucks?
We have a student representative here.
We're going to have CUNY's.
Would let him speak, please, Timothy?
Um, I echo some of the same sentiments of my fellow students here. So I have some, some questions after having some discussions with them that I want to kind of articulate to the, you know, to the board and also to President Rab. I understand that, you know, the fiscal situation of our colleges, especially our senior colleges who are facing like a lot of deficits, especially due to the tap gap and a lot of other things that are happening. However, I think that there are a lot of concerns, but I think the first thing I wanted to ask, and again, one of the students behind me asks, was there any student consultation throughout this process?
We have informed and all along the student government about the plans.
That's a lie.
And the student government, I know, has had a town hall and spoken to students in general. But at the end of the day, and we also had very consistent student input into a general master plan, which, as I said, called for more spaces for students and faculty to have some level of communal space on the campus. This is a commuter campus. It's a very tight space, as you know, and so this idea of places for students just to be able to sit and, you know, read in between classes is something that's always been on a priority list.
So you brought up a really good point in terms of the student spaces, and I think that a lot of the students are upset because they used these spaces prior. And I think that the biggest concern that I have is, you know, what is going to be done in terms of giving students another space? I know that student, we have a new.
Student unit. So let me just address your first point to really clear. This has been a student bookstore.
Yeah, with Barnes &amp; Noble.
For decades and decades and decades. There was a short period where this was, most of the space was leased to a commercial outfit that was, we actually selected because we thought it'd be of interest to the students, but it was a commercial outlet that made environmentally sustainable clothing. And for a very short period, the students came to the art department, the art department asked us if we could have a pop-up art exhibit. So there is no long history of this space being used by students. Second point, as you absolutely correctly pointed out, we have just opened a $5 million student union at Hunter College. This is the first time that Hunter College has ever had a student union, one space for all of our student activities. It is, and we are so grateful to all of the people in facilities management under the vice chancellor for this really incredible project. It was a jointly fundraised by private sources, by student fees, and by the, by rezaway money from, from the community college, from the city council and the borough president, as well as CUNY critical maintenance money. So for the first time, Hunter has a game room, which is filled with students all the time. Student government has a beautifully renovated space. We have all new club rooms, efficient use of ways clubs can share space in between conferences and small meeting areas. So we really have, for the first time, a student union, as I said, at Hunter College, that just, that just opened.
Sorry, how far is this building from the main campus?
It's funny, I mean, we're basically, as you know, four corners of a Manhattan space. So we, this Starbucks space is in the West Building, and the space I'm just talking about is across, is literally across 60th Street and Thomas Hunter. It's right there.
So students will be able to utilize that, will there be like a section put aside for students that are specifically interested in like what this has been used for prior, like let's say showcasing the art in a gallery? Will like the administration of Hunter College be doing their due diligence in finding a place to, to put these students and have these same opportunities?
So I'm just going to go back. For a very brief period, students did a pop-up art exhibit. We have, at the same time, we have numbers of the art exhibits of our students all over our campus. We have a program called Muse Scholars, which is a support for students in the arts. They do art exhibits throughout the campus. As you know, I'm sure you've been to our campus, we have a lot of wall space, we have a lot of spaces. So we work with students all the time to do, to do special art exhibits. We just opened a, from a $150,000 gift from an alum, we just opened an Office of the Arts. It has, it's where our arts management program are, free tickets, all sorts of arts activities.
So President Rab, I completely understand.
We've offered, I'm saying, we've offered that for group shows. So we are, I love nothing more than the idea of the students wanting to do art shows.
Then support us.
We have so much space throughout the campus where we can do art shows. We also have four galleries within Hunter College that are more.
So I think that the reason why what's behind us is happening is because the students, they're, they're either not aware, they're not informed, or it's just not there. And I think that what needs to happen is that there just needs to be some communication. Like I know, I'm looking at Hunter student right now that has some very strong sentiments towards this, and I'm sure if these opportunities were conveyed to them and to the rest of the school, I think that it would be, it would be better for everyone else to kind of like, you know, not have these same confusions. But I do have some questions about the Starbucks situation in itself. I feel like there's a lot of things as to what it will do for Hunter, the college, in terms of the operational budget, but I'm noticing some things here such as like rent abatement. So about like how much time would, like, you know, Starbucks not be like paying rent?
They, they, no, they will, well, they're going to be paying rent. What, we're actually, to that point, we're actually very satisfied with the deal we were able to arrange with Starbucks. Because rather than having to pay upfront for all the costs of renovation, which is the way your typical lease requires, the person who's, the entity that's leasing the property is required to put out the money to build out the space. Starbucks has built out the space and we are paying them back over a period of a year. So, of, actually longer than a year.
So let me retrace.
So we'd be paying them back in two?
Usually a landlord has to create what is called a vanilla box, meaning you have to create a space so that the tenant can come and do his build-out. We, we're not in the business of leasing a lot of property, but this one big tenant needed, for example, utility tines, a lot of infrastructure that we could have done but would have taken us longer and perhaps more expensive. So instead of we having them do the work that we should have done as a landlord and instead giving them the credit. In, in the commercial world, this is always, is always done because it's part of the leasing transaction, is having one of the parties do the work.
Thousand square feet is rent-free as well.
So we're actually getting, instead of having to put out the money first, it's coming out of the, of the profits over the time. So it's actually a very good deal for Hunter College.
But it's actually not, it's, it's a misnomer to say free rent. You don't pay rent during a period of time. What happens is during that cost gets amortized over the first 10 years of the lease. So as the tenant pays your rent, they're paying you back what is in essence a loan you made to them. So then nothing is free.
If you look at the square feet.
And if they terminate, if they terminate in year five, which is, have arrived, they have to reimburse all the unamortized costs that you, the credit that you gave them. So they're paying for everything. The only way you're doing it is they're spreading the cost over the 10-year original term of the lease. Nothing is actually for free. Nothing is for free. Even when the landlords offer you a free, a couple of free rents, even when they pay the commission, right, because the landlord pays the commission, that commission amount is amortized over the base rent. Nothing's for free, and we're not giving them anything for free. They just don't, they're not paying rent for a period of time, and then we regain that cost at an interest over the 10-year span.
Chairman, if the time allows, would I be able to get two more questions from the President?
Yes, but two more.
Public space in a public university.
Again, please, if you continue to interrupt us, I'm going to have to ask security to clear the room.
And we will keep showing up.
This is one of the very few opportunities that CUNY students, faculty, and staff have.
Can I, can I jump in? I do want to reiterate that this space, Dastin, which owns our facilities, counts what is called private use of our facilities. This space has always been counted as private use because it was designed to be commercial space.
This is shocking.
For, for always. It's always been a commercial space.
I can't think of any other reason.
What happened was that during the time that they closed the prior retail and the new one, it was a period of time to do a RFP to select.
How many campuses have you been to? Have you been to York College?
I have been to York College.
Have you seen the Starbucks there that is so well utilized?
Look at that lobby right there and tell me that you're providing space for CUNY students, faculty, and staff. That's 52 seats, my friend.
Yeah.
If we want to try and.
They rotate without fix.
Be respectful. What are your last two questions, please?
There are three Starbucks in the five-block radius. This is a ridiculous proposal.
I think that, you know, another sentiment that the students are having is that, you know, what is it for them?
What is being done?
Yeah, you know, and I think that right now we're seeing, again, a contract that's like, you know, giving a lot of money for Hunter. Are we doing anything in terms of our, there's two things I've heard about.
It's $400,000 in our budget.
I know, I understand.
That means, it, it, very, very tight.
Yeah, that's your salary.
That's salary, yeah.
That's your salary.
In terms of like job opportunities for students and like the food pantry that like is, is like at the dorms, that's a little bit far away. How will we like work towards bringing that to that?
I think that's a very good question, those, very good questions. So starting with Starbucks, so Starbucks has made a commitment to very soon having a hiring fair to reach out to try to hire students for these jobs, and the jobs have health insurances, which is one of the important, which is one of the important, one of the star, the signature of the Starbucks corporation.
Students want space for student programming.
So we have asked, and we've asked them for jobs, and we've asked them to consider what else they can do for the community.
Any scholarships?
We have, we've actually.
This is also very anti-union.
We have asked them to both consider scholarships, discounts, and other things. I don't have a positive answer for you yet, but we have been really lobbying the corporate offices, and I want to continue to do so. But they have made a commitment to hiring students.
Go tens of thousands of dollars and you definitely get a lot of.
And then the second, you know, issues, we are, I mean, I can tell the vice chancellor and, and Mr. Adonis knows how many current renovation projects are ongoing for student space. We finished the student union, we're trying to launch the fifth floor of the library, we're about to open a new music hall, which is.
This is four of the library is going to shut down for years, and there's been no information about it.
You have to stop interrupting, okay?
But this is a sham. This is so sad.
Okay, I, there is $5 million with, there's $5 million with CUNY of private money we have raised to launch the library. And so we would like to move the library ahead. We're about to open a new music, that was room that was from a million-dollar donation. So we are working very hard to continue to do support.
We sent dozens of emails about this. Over the past year, but since May, since May 2021.
My last question.
I'm not sure I got to.
Okay, okay.
I hope I answered your question, but I can't even hear myself think, so.
No, go ahead, no, that's fine.
I just think that, you know, again, like, the students are here for a reason, and, like, students have told me, like, they had made attempts to email and things like that. I think, again, just opening those lines of communication once in a while.
Just, and I, with all due respect, I meet, nothing's more important to me in this job than students and student communications.
That's a lie. All you care about is a paycheck.
And I, and we meet regularly with the student government, regularly. We have discussed this with the student government.
They told us themselves that they had no opportunity for student input. I met with student government as well. You are lying. I, their live stream is on Facebook, you can check it out themselves where they say that you kept this deal a secret from them. It's online, you can look it up.
The RFP, by the way, was public. Wait. We're taking a five-minute adjournment to clear the room, and then we'll come back and finish with the questions.
So sad. Who do you work for? Students are telling you we.
Tim, why, would you want to finish up?
I think, yeah, I think, again, I think, now that we have the student union building, I think we should explore what in terms of what the students want. I'm not sure if it's like, with that, that's like student government, like us putting aside, I don't know, 500 square feet of space inside that building if it's not already distributed, and taking a poll of the student population to see what they want. Because I think what's important is that we try to like at least work with the students. I know that they're really upset and they want these things to kind of go through the of go through the way that they want. Um, but I think this is, this is something that doesn't, the board doesn't even need to do in terms of like local administration. I'm pretty sure that's just working with student government to put aside a couple square feet of space inside the building. Because again, um, students from Hunter come to me and say, oh, well, Tim, we need you to do something, there's no food pantry. And then when I inquire about it, I realize that there's a food pantry, but it's really far away.
So, I, I want to, actually, that's, I, because of all the noise behind, I wanted to come back to that. So, let me just respond to two things you just said. First is, we do work very close with our student government on all sorts of initiatives. And the idea of, again, there's so many places in Hunter for art exhibits, and I'm thrilled. What could be more wonderful than having student art? So, we will continue to do that. Um, we are also, we do have a strate, a master plan for space that the students were very involved with as well as the rest of the community. And we know so well that one of the big needs is just places to study quietly, grab a coffee, be around. And one of the things that we, just this winter break that was just approved in a naming resolution by FSA about last month, was something we're calling grateful auditor space, which is somebody who's been auditing class at Hunter for eight years, and she's came to me and said, oh, kids are, too many students are just sitting on the floor, there should be more spaces for students. So, she gave us a $250,000 gift, and within the west building and these little pockets, places that we have little triangles on each floor, we're putting rugs and couches and lots and lots and lots of outlets for charging and some tables so students can have more spaces to study. So, we're always trying to increase the number of spaces for students to hang out, to meet, to talk, that's why the library is important, all of it. I think your point finally on the food pantry is very well taken. Um, we did, when we were asked to do a food pantry, you're correct, we started at Brookdale because that's where we had the most, the easiest available space. But I've really thought about it since you've raised it, and it really was you, Tim, who raised it with us, and we are looking right now to have a food pantry on 68th Street. I think we needed to also see what was the demand, and we know that it's clearly there. I wish almost it wasn't, but it's clearly the need is there. So, we are going to start a food pantry on the 68th Street campus, and I've asked my, um, a team to try to start finding and identify a place. And we're also doing some other innovative things with food. We have a food box, I don't know if you know about it?
Yeah, I've heard of it.
That's fourteen dollars, and that, you know, for fresh fruit and et cetera. So, um, we're thinking actually even about a fr, a fruit vending machine. So, we're really trying to work on healthy or better and affordable food on campus. But I, I want to make a public commitment to you that we are looking, and within the next two months, we should have a food pantry set up on 68th Street. And I thank you both for pushing on that.
Yeah. Um, I mean, Tim, you pretty much hit everything, um, um, that I was going to say, so thank you for that. It's okay, no, no, I don't, no, no. But I, um, I mean, again, I, obviously, I get the need for, you know, um, operating costs. I'm, I'm not oblivious to that at all, you know? But again, it's just, I've, I've also been in conversations with the students, and you can clearly see why they are upset. Again, you mentioned the lack of stu, well, from what I understand, the lack of student consultation, um, and also the fact that, I've heard that there have been a, a number of students, a number of student groups have been looking for space and, but yet, they keep getting told, sorry, lack of space. For example, that the LGBTQ students have been wanting a lounge, and, uh, students with disabilities, I know they've been trying to, um, have a space as well. Um, in fact, I know one of my, uh, one of my peers said that, um, they had a conversation with administration, and they were like, yes, we, we, we think this is great, let's do it. But nothing has come of it, you know? And, and then again, with the, with the food pantry, you know, I know you guys hear a lot about food insecurity, you know, and that is, that's a continuing problem, you know? And, um, again, with the food pantry, you know, being, you know, as far as it may be, I think it's what, twenty minutes or so, um, by, by subway, you know? I can only imagine, you know, if I was a poor starving student, you know, and I take Accessa ride, and it's two seventy-five to go and to come back, and I can only imagine that even if that subway, which I don't even know if it's accessible, I, I probably wouldn't even be ex...
We're actually waiting, I, for eighteen years, I've been trying to nag the MTA for the elevator, they promised me to make that sta, station accessible. So, maybe you could help me on that one, because I might pull my hair out with the MTA, so.
Okay, well, that's...
But I do want to say to you, to your point, we, this is a public commitment, we're gonna have a food pantry on 68th Street, and also Vice President Aervanian, who's here, who was here with, uh, us today, we also have a very active voucher program, and we do, uh, we're, you know, we're, we are, it's not like, we do have a number of things on the 68th Street campus. We haven't had the food pantry, and we're gonna add one. Um, we also have just created a space for LGBTQ students, we're working on that right now. We just got a $400,000 gift, which was also approved, um, from the board, with the Board of Trustees about two months ago, and that space is being built. It will be for students to socialize, but also they'll be, part of that gift will pay for a part-time counselor and support staff for the, for the LGBTQ students. So, we're very focused on that. Um, and on disabilities, as you know, I think we have one of the, I feel we have one of the finest programs in CUNY, really been always of incredible importance to me personally and to Vice President Aervanian, and we are trying, again, to have more space for the students. But I will step back again and say, this was always a commercial space, so we have kept it in that realm, and frankly, it's not an easy space. So, it was not like there were twelve different applicants to rent the space, and we then might have had a public conversation about what fits the needs the best. There were limited opportunities to be able to reuse this space and to get what is really a considerable amount of money and, and in this day and age to support Hunter students.
Madam President, I'd like to ask a question that Mr. Chair, which relates to, um, Mr. Hunter's point. My experience with Starbucks and other retailers like that is that they will oftentimes, in their design, their interior design, put in art and bring in art exhibitions, small, but at least put artworks, and it may be in discussions with Starbucks and their...
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
And so that the students, not only can there be art in the retail space, but it be art that, how shall I put it, would get publicized.
But I also...
And I'm, I'm meddling, and I apologize, but I think there's some, there's room there for, it doesn't have to be bare space.
Right, but I just, I think to, I really think the record, it's important here, Hunter is committed to being the public school of the arts. We have so many special art programs, and the students did not mention them, but as I said, we just opened with a hundred fifty thousand dollar gift an office of the arts. So, we have places for art students to hang around, get free tickets, internships, our arts management certificate program, this space on that wall, it is filled right now with student art, okay? We have a Muse program, which is an undergraduate honors program. Freshmen are given scholarships because of their art to come to Hunter, and the leader of that program does art exhibits all through the school every year, some of it with performance art and other with visual art on the walls. So, we are very, very committed, and we run four student galleries. Yes, most of them are devoted to our graduate program, which is world-renowned for our MFA. But we often have, we have a BFA program as well for undergraduate exhibits, and we have community outreach art in East Harlem. So, this is something, there's always art exhibits going on at Hunter, and we will try to do better, and we are included. And the students here today, um, again, we tend to, we've been working with our student government, but we have met with these students. I have been stopped on, you know, you know, the last couple of months in the hallways, I walk the hallways, I've had the conversation with the students. So, to say there's been no conversation is not completely accurate. It's a decision, it's a decision not everybody's agreeing on, but it is a decision based on real analysis and the, and our decision of what really is best for the operations of Hunter College.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna put it to the floor for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, two. Any abstentions?
One.
One, one, one.
Who's abstained?
One opposed.
One opposed, sorry. Any abstentions? Motion carries. With no more items on the policy calendar, I now call on Senior Vice Chancellor and move to address any informational items on, any information items on the agenda.
I, I would just like to report on, on several aspects of the CUNY capital program, and, uh, this is, um, okay.
Give it up.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
So, we're not voting. I just have...
The theme, the, the first theme is really delivering capital projects on time and on budget. And to this extent, we're undertaking a comprehensive review and assessment of current procedures and policies with the goal to assess our current capacity and be able to identify areas that need reform. We're looking to improve procurement process. We're looking to possibly add, uh, staff or consultants to assist in various aspects of the capital process, from early scoping work to, to the, the day-to-day management of design and construction activities. One of the things that I think, uh, the President Rab mentioned before about, about master plans, one of the important areas of our capital planning that we intend to address is updating the master plans for the various colleges. It's unbelievable that some of the colleges haven't had updated master plans in decades, decades. We're talking about when I was at CUNY. So, so what we're, what we're going to do is, um, we're gonna fo, focus on, on, um, developing a timetable whereby we can update all of the master plans that are currently literally obsolete at this point. They're so old that they don't represent the current conditions and the future needs of the campuses. So, this is something where we'll report back once we, once we get our handle, our hands around this thing. Another thing that's kind of related to capital is, um, is something that, uh, I know that the, uh, the Chief Operating Officer had, had asked the, uh, Facilities Group to look into, which was to develop a, um, develop more transparency between, between the, between central office facilities and construction and the, and the campuses. And what we're looking at is, uh, developing, uh, an online platform that could be accessed by the president of the colleges, and we're looking into whether, how far that, how that, how far that goes, and, but it's something that's, it's in the, in the, in the process.[1699.52]